There is the proverbial thumbs up and good evening. It is February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. This is the bi-monthly meeting of the Norfolk Select Board, of which myself, Cece Van Tyne, is the current Chair. Anita Mecklenburg is the current Vice Chair. And Mr. Kevin Calcutta is the Clerk. We are currently via Zoom, although the next meeting, if nothing changes, should be live. That would be on March first. But for today, at least, we continue to appear via Zoom with all of the citations to the Mass General laws that that engenders. There will be no pledge of allegiance as a result of, as I mentioned, you Zoom. Without further ado, Blythe, if you could take us through this evening's agenda.
Sure. Just a point of order. Do you want to take roll call for the?
Oh, that's right.
Rules?
That's right. I even reminded myself that we would have a roll call vote every time anybody voted. But I had forgotten the fact that we would. I don't even remember doing it. That's just how. No, no, it's great. That's how foggy my brain is. I don't recall having done the roll call at the beginning before. But I probably forgot. So Carolyn Van Tyne, present.
Anita Mecklenburg, present.
Kevin Calcutta here.
So the agenda tonight includes a few things. First is to continue the water public hearing from the last meeting to consider the race for FY twenty-three, followed by public comment. Then the action items are to consider approving the Water Enterprise Fund rates for next fiscal year. To consider approving the retention of a consultant to assist in the recruitment of town administrator position. To consider a request for use of Town Hill by the Garden Club in May. Discussion items are town administrator updates, including COVID. A discussion of a list of articles for the annual town meeting warrant discussing police department succession planning. There are four warrants to be approved and one set of minutes.
Thank you, Blythe. Before we dive right into public comment, I will add that at this time I'm removing action item number four, which is the second action item. Number four, as I have some questions and I don't think that it's ready for discussion and action at this time. So that one we will not reach this evening. And then on to public comment. I'm going to trust Amanda to tell me if there's anybody waving. Is there anyone even in other than, I see ten, but I know people can be elsewhere. But if there's any questions or public comments there.
Water public hearing listed first.
Oh, you're right. You do. I even printed it. So I was like, I'm gonna be good and print it. So, um, all right, then I'll shut up about public comment and turn it over to the water hearing, which I.
Give people more time to be ready with their comments. That's all.
Right.
So tonight we are here to, the last meeting, the Public Works Department gave the presentation about the rates for next year. And as we've done the last couple of years, we continue the hearing to the second meeting so that people can ruminate on what they may have heard or watched in the meeting before. And take any comment that they'd like to give before the board closes the public hearing and then votes on whether to approve the races recommended or not. So I can tell you, we haven't received any comments in our office. Otherwise, we would have included them in your packet. So I'm not sure if anyone's here to make comments or the board has any other questions. Both Blair and Barry are joining us tonight, who put these together. In case, as I know, Cece, you weren't able to be at the last meeting. Perhaps you do happen to answer any of those before we close it.
So I don't have any questions. I'd like to say that while I was with my daughter at the Bruins game, we were reviewing all of the water information. And I worked it all out at that point. That would be a lie. But it, I would like to say it. So I have no questions at this time. I don't know if Anita or Kevin have any questions or comments.
No.
Yeah, none from either. Thank you.
And again, I'm going to check to Amanda to see if there's any left. Anybody? No?
No, there are no questions.
No furious hands.
No, or thumbs. No yellow thumbs up in the corner. So I guess at that point, or at this one, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that the board vote to close the public hearing for the FY twenty-three water rates.
Wait a second.
Second.
And roll call vote. Carolyn Van Tyne, aye.
Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
Kevin Calcutta, aye.
So now it's closed.
So now you can move to public comment, then after that, take up the actual rates.
Yeah, actual vote. Yeah.
Right.
Um, so now we're going to public comment. Any, any curious waving of hands over public comment?
None at this time.
Kind of the doldrums for a question at point, yeah, point of the year. But seeing no public comment, I guess we're going to now move on to action item number three.
This is to vote on the actual rates proposed in the presentation, which we said include another copy in your book just in case any of you wanted to review them.
Now, since we just, I don't have any comments at this point. I think it would be probably pretty surprising if I waited. But I don't, just in case people were wondering, I have no questions or comments at, that have fulminated since thirty-seven seconds ago. But perhaps Anita or Kevin have some comments or questions?
Not at this time.
I tried very hard to come up with one, but I could not.
I, I, yeah, it's just, it was really well thought out and presented and pretty self-explanatory. So with that said, I would also entertain a motion.
I move that the board vote to approve FY twenty-three water fund rates.
Second. Sorry.
That was my fault. I got too excited. Um, roll call vote. All those in favor saying aye. Carolyn Van Tyne, aye.
Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
Kevin Calcutta, aye.
Then that brings us to action item number five.
So this item is, the Garden Club is interested in having its annual Clinton Bake Sale, which is always a well-loved event, very well-attended on May fourteenth in the morning with a rain date of the day after. We've got a well-oiled process down in our office to go through getting everybody's input on that. It's all good. And so we would recommend that the board approve the use of Town Hill for that date.
I haven't, no questions or comments.
No, I'm excited to live in a town that has a garden club. I think that's awesome.
I do too. Every year I get plants and every year, I mean, maybe they don't want to know this, like perhaps there's like a, an organization that takes plants away from people, but if there were, it would be me. They just don't make it. I want to be good with plants so badly, but.
Have to read to them. You have to read.
Is that right? I have to water them, I think is the problem. I just, I just forget. So in any event, Kevin, any comments or questions?
I can't follow that up. I'm good. Thank you.
Just to note, they did specify that they would like the rain date times to be ten-thirty to three-thirty. That came in after the fact, so just so you're aware.
But the original is still eight to twelve-thirty?
Yes.
Okay. Seems fine. Interesting, but seems fine to me. Kevin or Anita, do you have any issue with the lateness of the hour of the rain date? Do we have a motion?
A move that the board approve the use of Town Hill by the Garden Club of Norfolk for its annual plant and bake sale to be held on Sunday, May fourteenth, twenty-two, twenty-two, from eight AM to twelve-thirty PM with a rain date of Sunday, May fifteenth, with different times that I didn't write down.
One second.
Sure, your motion looks wicked smart.
Wicked.
Ancient that word.
Second.
Roll call vote. All those in favor saying aye. Carolyn Van Tyne, aye.
Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
Kevin Calcutta, aye.
Is, is there any problem? I just had somebody text me to say that they can't find us on YouTube. Our one viewer.
It says we're live on the customer streaming service.
Yeah. I don't know. Maybe it's just their setup. Um, the next thing up, I guess, is number six, town administrator update.
A few things. As you know, the calendar points us to upcoming months and Memorial Day at the end of May. One of the board's items for this year on their work plan was to talk about town celebrations. And since we've had a hiatus not having the parade for two years, I'm sure everyone's very hopeful that we can be able to safely have it this year. And so planning comes to mind. Judith took the initiative to write, to reach out to Mr. Bacardi about the organizational details. And there's an email in your packet about that. As, as I best understand it, the role of our office has really been to decide who is invited and invite them to participate in the parade, after which the parade is organized. And, and he really focuses on what happens in Town Hill. So our question really to you, we don't need to decide tonight, but to put out there for you to think about is, do you want to do something different with the parade than has been done in the past? Do you want us to call and get ahold of the groups that usually participate and invite them again and do the same thing? Just wanted to put this on your radar screen early so that Judith and Amanda can do whatever it is the board wants to do. And if it's something different, that's just great. We just need to know what it is so we can make it happen. So. That's, and I'm happy to discuss it with you tonight if you want to, if you had a chance to look at it, or we can take it up in another meeting. Just wanted to plant the seed about that topic.
I, I don't have anybody right now. I will say it's, it's interesting. It's funny because you don't think about how long it's been since we actually had like a, like a normal parade that, and so I was never, I don't think ever involved, because I would have come in, it would have already been planned. And then the next year, I think we went off the rails. So I was looking at the packet that included the Memorial Day memorandum from May twenty-seven, two thousand and nineteen. And it just left out of me, which I know life will appreciate, no horses are advertising allowed. And I recall seeing horses. Like, I know I've seen horses. And so I was like, maybe it was a different parade, but I don't, we don't have a lot of parades. So I'm wondering why the no horses, is it to prevent them from going rogue and trampling the town?
Just what's in the.
Blair gonna have to shovel their, you know what afterwards, which, you know, it's very pleasant compared to dog poop. So that's just my one, one girl's opinion. But that's the odd thing that jumped out of all of the stuff for tonight. Everything that was on tonight's agenda. I flagged no horses that were on the parade. And it's not, it's not a hill I intend to climb and die on. It was just something interesting because I know that for me, parades are always made by horses. And I understand that it's a solemn occasion and so forth, but.
So it's certainly up to whatever the board would like to do. If you'd like to invite horses or other four-legged critters, you know, you can.
All quadrupeds welcome other than lions or something. No, I just, it just, it's, it jumped out at me. I'm sure there's a, there's a reason for it. And I don't, I wouldn't be bringing any, so. That was, but I will certainly, I'm looking forward to learning more about the process, hopefully knock on wood, of a parade that is not modified due to Corona. Either Anita, do you have anything, comment, question, add?
Well, what jumped out at me was the two-year hiatus because last year was borderline parade-like.
Right.
It sort of had a lot of the trappings of a parade, but no, I'm excited to have public events again in Norfolk. It's always nice when the community comes together and it's an honorable occasion to recognize our fallen soldiers. And so I'm happy to go forward with the planning. I don't have any burning dreams about changing it, but I'm open to if other people have ideas about making it different. But I hadn't considered changes, other than that one flag thing that Kevin and I already talked about. Yes, Kevin, we did, right?
I remember it.
Thank you.
That seems like a simple.
A simple fix.
Yep. Um, Kevin?
Uh, yeah, from my perspective, I mean, I remember us putting on the work plan to try to target an event or a holiday of some kind to rally the community in a more celebratory fashion. I think that Memorial Day is one of the holidays that the town does very well in terms of getting everybody in the community together in remembrance. I think that our focus should be on returning to a normal, what we considered normal from two thousand and nineteen, parade event, as we've done in the past, before we talk about the potential for expanding it. I do think that it could be a potential great day to be able to add some other events or perhaps enhance it in some way, shape or form. But I think that for this year, it would be a victory in itself for us just to do what we did back in two thousand and nineteen, provided that we're in the same stage as we are kind of right now in terms of public health. So those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Oh, you're done? Sorry. Okay. See, I guess we're done with that one then. Moving on.
Yeah. So just let us know, Cece, if you want to back on the agenda, talk about more, or, you know, you all decide you want to, steady as she goes with the same plan and the past, and we'll make that happen. The other items to cover, just, I'm sure you're aware, the fire station building committee is having a community event tomorrow evening at seven o'clock at the fire station. We will be prepared with the concept drawing of what the fire station could look like, floor plans, details about the budget, the schedule, looking to cover lots of the topics that have been coming up and people have been asking about and get a little more information out there. So just hopefully for all those watching out there, please feel stop, feel free to stop by. It should be a little warmer than today. We'll be in the apparatus bay with the trucks moved out and we'll be doing tours afterwards. So hoping to see a good showing of people interested in the project. Also, covering COVID, our case count as of last Thursday is up to one thousand eight seventy-six. So not jumping, not growing as it has been. And our positivity rate is down by about half to forty-four per thousand. So that's good news. It's slowing. We're still lower in the county than most communities. And the Department of Public Health put out a new guidance about masks today. And we are looking at changing the mask mandate for town buildings starting next week in accordance with that. So that if you're vaccinated, you don't need to have your mask on in the building. If you're unvaccinated, you do, whether you're a resident or an employee. And just trying to be careful, but trying to strike the balance of giving people some relief since the numbers are getting to be in a better place. So waiting to hear back from the chair of the Board of Health that she's comfortable with that as well. And if so, we will make sure all the department heads are and then move forward to implement that for Tuesday, since Monday's a holiday. And then sent, we're continuing to work on the website. We are hot at work at the site map, which lays out all the pages that will be on the new website. So I sent an email to all of you today. If there's something you'd really love to see on the board's page going forward that isn't there today or something you don't think is relevant anymore, Amanda and I would love to know that. So we can start to build that and make sure it's going to reflect what you're looking for in the future. And then lastly, just reminder that we are right in the thick of budgets right now. Todd and I have been meeting most of every day this week with all the departments and expect to have the budget to you the very beginning of March so that the board can start to debate that, as well as advisory can dig into it in their regular course of business. Those are my updates.
Thank you very much. Any questions, Anita or Kevin?
I'm, I'm worried about, I'm assuming that the, for visitors to Town Hall, the masks on, if you're not vaccinated, is going to be on our system.
It is. Yeah, we don't really, we're not set up to necessarily station someone at the door to check everybody. And the, the honest system seemed to work fairly well before. And so it feels like it's time to safely do that. Of course, if things take another turn, we'll, we'll turn with it. But hopefully that will be okay.
Kevin, any questions or comments? Right on to number seven.
Seven, yes. Annual town meeting. So in your packet is the typical list of all of the articles that we have so far. There are twenty-four, and it looks fairly much like a regular annual meeting. I will tell you that we are gonna actually need to change it to twenty-five because when we, when I was first approached by the school superintendent about the Freeman County expansion and wanting to go ahead with a feasibility study, I anticipated that she was looking to borrow a significant amount of money to go through the design process. And that's not the case. They're only looking for money for a feasibility study. So we're going to want to make this its own article for a smaller amount of money. That's good news. The articles, just to give you a very, very quick snapshot, there are the usual articles such as the budget, reauthorizing revolving funds, CPC articles, there's only one article to do a project, which is to develop a townwide plan for weed control rather than doing it water body by water body. We'll have two articles to take up the recodification of both the general and zoning bylaws. That's been a major multi-year project we're ready to bring to conclusion. We need easements on Lawrence Street to put in the sidewalk that will go up to the new development at the top of the hill. Have three zoning articles, housekeeping, if you will, that the planning board is approving. And copies of those are in your packet as well, so you can see the actual language. And then the typical chapter ninety, grants and sale of surplus property. So the warrant closed Friday, unless the board decides to add something else that it thinks is important to take up. Or we get a petition from some residents that we haven't seen yet. This pretty much should be the list.
Is there any sort of rumblings about any petitions, which I guess my initial question should be, did, how long do citizens have in order to effectuate adding an article?
Because our bylaws are silent on that. And we've dealt with this in.
Right, I remember dealing with.
Basically, they have to, only need to gather ten signatures for an annual meeting. And they can bring it to us as, as late as the day you sign the warrant, which would be in, in April. So I, I had heard that there might possibly be a group interested in a bylaw about the use of, you know, leaf, electric, I mean, gas-powered leaf blowers. Haven't heard anything about it since it came up several months ago. So I don't know if it's still something people are interested in, but haven't seen anything yet. And my only caution would be to people, you know, we do try to work with folks to help them make sure their articles, you know, ready to be discussed. And so if we get it very late and it's in not necessarily in a good format, that could provide challenges. So we just urge people to, to let us know sooner if they think they're going to, you know, ask to include something.
Right. That's sound advice. Definitely. Anita, any questions or comments about what you see on this very bare bones draft?
No.
Kevin?
Just one question, Blythe. Had we been accepted into the MSBA program, we still would have had to go to town meeting for the feasibility study for the borrowing of money to execute it, right? That had no bearing on this step of the process.
That's correct. The MSBA process does require feasibility. But doing this on our own is not going to take us out of that. And in fact, I met with the school superintendent this afternoon and went through all this. Their plan is to go ahead with just feasibility. It's about a hundred, targeting around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And to reapply to the MSBA again. And so that will need to come on our agenda in the next, you know, two months, so that can be done on time. So that they can still hope to get into the MSBA program in the next year. And then the only question that is really open is, would the feasibility, whatever aspects of the feasibility study we complete, would that be accepted as is by the MSBA? Or would they make us do any part of it over again? That would have to be discussed with them if that happens. And if they get into, if you get into MSBA, great, we're moving ahead to go to schematic design. If we don't, then, you know, she's targeting the, a year from now, May twenty-three town meeting to request the schematic design phase of the project, which is usually about ten percent of the total. So whether in the MSBA or not, that's probably the timeline.
Awesome. Thank you, Blythe.
Blythe, sort of as a tangential question, how does that timeline? And I'm talking now about sort of the supposition about two thousand and twenty-three with the, the ask for about ten percent of the total. How does that timeline dovetail with the ask that's going to come up for fire, the fire?
Excellent question. So the, we're going to cover this tomorrow night at the, at the meeting. The plan is to finish the design for the fire station in late October, early November to go out to bid. So that we have bids right before Christmas. And then town can be ready to have a special town meeting in January of twenty-three. And a special election in the, you know, a couple of weeks perhaps after that. So it would be ahead of the ask for schematic design for the school by four months. It's really going to be a decision for all of you as to whether that's the right timing for that project. Or, you know, you could go later. If you chose to, it would be very difficult to go earlier because originally we wanted to be on a schedule to bring this to the fall twenty-two town meeting. But with the election being the first, actually November first, the first Tuesday in November, it was just impossible to do a really good job on the design and go out to bid and be through your process and advisory or a special town meeting in October to meet that deadline, because ideally you don't want to ask the voters to come out to an election a couple of weeks apart. You know, that, that's a lot to ask of people. And we just didn't, also didn't want to have the election vote before the town meeting when you can, you know, hopefully bring some people together and explain the project, you know, before they vote on it.
And it's, with respect to the special election, obviously that's an expense. Is that one of the things that's considered in the budget for this fire station?
Absolutely. So there'd be a small expense to hold the town meeting and according to the town clerk, about five thousand dollars to hold the election. You know, in, in January is not necessarily the greatest time. It's cold. People might, you know, maybe snowbirds are not here. You risk weather, but then how does the town want to handle that vis a vis the timing for the school? So.
It's all very interesting information. Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments based upon what Blythe and I were just chatting about?
All right. Oh, sorry. The schools are at capacity now. Is that true?
Um, so getting there, they added about twenty-five students a year. They're updating their enrollment projections, working on that right now. And so we talked about the fact that, you know, gee, why didn't we, why didn't, why wasn't the town accepted into the program now? And what's the likelihood of future? As I understand it, the state did a review of all schools and found that there are about sixty or so percent of schools in the state, and you probably know this, Anita, are in poor condition or have. Are in poor condition or have ventilation problems. That, you know, COVID has, you know, brought to light as a real problem. And so the, the number of schools that fall into the highest category of need has gotten bigger. And this year, the MSBA only accepted into their program thirty percent of those who asked. And with overcrowding, which is the second high, highest priority by the MSBA, it's actually about current over, it actually looks to fund. Projects that are currently overcrowded, not ones that are almost overcrowded. So my takeaway from that is, we should apply again, cause it's the right thing to do. But I wouldn't want to put a lot of hope that the town will get accepted. If all these other schools are in really difficult spot and the state has a limited amount of money. You know, the diff, disappointing part about that is then the project becomes quite expensive for Norfolk. At the same time, and it desperately needs to uh, sort out what it does about its fire station. So.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yep.
All right, I guess then we're on to um, number eight.
Yeah, so um, the board had asked the chief and uh, and HR director Scott Bragden and I to work on uh. What we would recommend for a plan for succession for the police departments. And that is the two-page memo that's in your packet. Um, this was authored by myself with support and, and helpful guidance by both of them, which I much appreciate. And our recommendation is, given the strength of the department and this, and the people that have been. Um, working towards the opportunity to move up over time, that, that the board, the town looked to promote from within. Um, it was, it's gonna be a, a, quite a change when the gentleman at the top, the chief and the deputy and Chuck and John. Retire with a combined eighty-three years of experience, maybe eighty-five by the time they both uh, are off doing other things. Um, but they've been busy over the years, helping groom the people who will, um, who could step into their shoes. And they feel that they will be ready to do that. So we outlined in the memo, you know, what that could look like. Um, it felt as important to try to answer the question, if it might be asked. What it might mean if you decided to go out of the department to do a wider search. So that is outlined in here, um, and then it had come up in previous. Conversations over the last couple of years about whether we should have the same number of people in rank positions. And so we tried to outline for you why we think that that's important and how the um, work has changed over time and most recently. Police reform in the last year. So this memo doesn't seek to tell you who would be recommended, we didn't, we're not trying to approach people here, really process. So, or you, and I see uh, Chuck has joined the meeting and Scott's here to answer any questions that you have.
So I don't have any questions per se, I understood the very um, well-thought-out detailed, single space, if I'm not mistaken. And um, that, a lot of information, wow. Um, but I would love to hear more, just because I think that folks um, watching now or watching later. May have questions, you know, we usually are opining about the need to do the, you know, what we, we colloquially refer to as the nationwide search, but sometimes. That isn't necessary or warranted, and this may be one of those times, and so beyond what's in this um. Memo, I'd love to hear more from um, the chief, if that's okay.
Okay, I think I'm live now, yes, okay.
Yes.
So. You know, we, we have people who have been on quite a while and, and ready to move up into those, those roles. And what I'm seeing from surrounding towns and further out. Is they, they may do a, a search if no one's interested, similar to uh, the fire department recently here in Norfolk. But, and some of the towns do the search if that's the case, and nobody, nobody really wanted to get up to that spot. But, yeah, we have very qualified people who have been taking a tremendous amount of training. Uh, you know, to, to, to uh, get, get to that point, and I believe as a result. Uh, you're gonna be very, very happy with the, the people who are, who we're projecting. You will interview for the chief's job and the deputy chief and the lieutenant. So, uh, you know, I would say, suggest to you that the process that we've outlined here in the memo. Is one that I'd like to see you do, based on my experience, and you gotta give me something here, be, as far as. I've worked with these people for a long time, I know what they're capable of. So I'd appreciate it, that, if we could go in that route.
Thank you. Blythe, is there anybody else, any, um, just, I don't, I think what you've covered here. Uh, more than covers what we need for, you know, I don't think Scott needs to um, speak as well. Um, Anita, do you have any, no, I was gonna.
I do.
I was just gonna say, do you guys, from my perspective, I don't have anything more that I need to hear right this second, Anita?
I, I feel like it's important to open up the search, and I think it's, doesn't preclude. The possibility of people in the department getting the job. And I know people in the department personally and find them to, have worked with them in different capacities and find them to be excellent, so I believe. Um, Chief Stone's words in terms of the, the high level of skill that we have in the Norfolk Police Department, but I think always when there's openings. Um, we would not in, in a business or in a school say, we're only gonna do this in-house, it, it's always an opportunity to see what's out there. And that it isn't exclusive, so our internal people should be encouraged to, to um, apply and be considered for that, and I think it's super important. That we um, that we open it up and, and encourage our internal folks to apply.
Are you, are you looking for an answer?
No, I didn't ask a question, I'm just saying, sharing my. I, I, I agree with you completely, chief, I've worked with, with your department in uh, my previous role and had nothing but a tremendous amount of respect for the professionalism. In terms of security and in terms of support for our community. Um, and so I agree with you completely, and so I don't at all, um. I'm not disparaging the, the high level of skill in our department, I just feel like always when there's an opening, it's an opportunity. To um, open the doors and see what's out there, and it could be that our result will be that we have internal candidates move forward, like that's entirely possible. I just think it's, it's appropriate and, and um, it honors the internal people too, right, that they, when, when they earn that, they earn it at, in a competitive market. And I think it's irresponsible not to. Uh, open it up and see what's out there for the town.
Kevin?
Oh, thank you, Cece, uh, so. I agree with a lot of what Anita said, um, when you do have an opportunity to be able to fill a role, I, I do think that there is value. In being able to assess as wide a scope as possible to fill a position. However, where I'll break with her is, is on the fact that if you have an investment in certain personnel, if we have invested in the development. Of certain personnel within this department that have, you know, echoed the culture, that have reiterated a lot of what the chief and the deputy chief have instilled into. The department and the community. I almost feel it would be irresponsible of us to negate that by opening it up for others to join, uh, or to be considered. Uh, the individuals that are potentially being identified as promoted into these roles. Um, are, are people that have given a lot to this community, um, they have gone through just about every training and development exercise they can. Um, I know that we had requested that the chief provide the succession plan for us to be able to assess and see if. This is the route that we wanted to go, and from my perspective. Uh, and speaking as an individual, I, I think that if they've identified in a line fashion. That we have internal candidates that can take on and carry the torch forward for the department, um, then that should be the way that we should go. Um, that's just my perspective.
So I'll now add my perspective, which is um, that uh, often. Like Anita, I am of the opinion that while there may be phenomenal candidates within. To cast a broad net advantage is everybody, but that I also think, two things, one, I think that. The suggestion is not irresponsible, I don't think that anything that the chief has ever done could be considered irresponsible. I think that it's different than what we're used to, but I'm mindful of the fact that in this instance. It's a community police department, and it's community policing, and he knows better than me. Um, who the candidates are, and he knows the community for whom the candidate's gonna fulfill the role. And I, to inverse what Anita was saying relative to, um, it doesn't forestall the folks from within. Getting the position to do a nation, to do it in the way that's being proposed, which is the way that I. Initially, I was sort of like, oh, I don't know, but I now really see the value in. Doesn't mean necessarily, it's not a fed a complete, maybe through the interview process is determined that none of them work, and then you can go without. Um, so, um, like Kevin, I am of the opinion that the succession plan as outlined in the memo. Um, is the place, I think, I agree that that's the place to start, I know we're not voting on it, I think it's just a discussion item, but. But from my perspective, um, that's, I, I feel very, very comfortable with this very thoughtful plan. And I muted myself, I don't know if there's anything more you need from us, or if we can just move on to the next.
So if, if, uh, so I understand, I, I understand the direction of, of the majority of the board. Um, our next step would be to advertise it internally at some point. Um, go through a process to uh, recommend, as you know, for the bylaws, town minister needs to recommend, this, this is one of the positions recommended, recommends to the board, sorry. Trouble getting the words out, um, and so would bring forth a candidate for you to interview, as you have done with other, some other department heads. And decide whether you agree with that appointment or not. And, um, and then negotiate a contract for the boards, also for the board's consideration. Um, given the timeline for the chief and the deputy chief, I think it would be responsible to do that. Um, in the next, you know, two or three months, so that that person can be. Uh, appointed uh, for dates certain in the future and in, you know, enjoy a, a little more time with the council of. Both the current chief and deputy chief before they take over. Uh, that would also then give us time to uh, handle the deputy and lieutenant positions, if those change in, in some way. Um, those don't need to come to the board, those would simply be handled on an internal basis. To fill those roles with people who seek that position, those positions. This is how we, how we're thinking about it.
Who would be on the committee to bring those people forward?
So we haven't given that thought yet, we're really focused just on the plan, I mean, we can, uh, we can handle it completely internally, we could bring in. You know, a chief or, or, or people from other, uh, from another, other towns to kind of give us an outside view of the, the candidates, sometimes that's really helpful. Someone can see something that we maybe wouldn't see. Um, also could include uh, department heads from other departments, it's, you know, we really have a terrific. Uh, relationship between police and fire that's really grown since uh, Chief Kenny joined us. And that's certainly really important, I think, for the town to continue on, make sure that is thought through as well. And bring forth the most well-rounded candidate, but that's just my, you know, off the, you know, from the hip. Answer right now, cause we hadn't really designed how that would work, yeah.
So Carolyn, if I might, the uh, quite often when you're doing a, a deputy chief and a lieutenant. Uh, you would, you might put together a, maybe a, another town administrator, another uh, chief or two, maybe have five people. And have them put together a bunch of questions and talk to the, talk to the people who are the candidates. And uh, and they would come together as a group and, and say, yes, this is the person uh, we think is the best suited to be, say, deputy chief and then lieutenant. And uh, that, that's what I've seen in my experience.
Thank you. All right, then I guess moving on to number nine.
Uh, just changing my pages here, that is worse.
Do I have a motion?
I've lost track, Kevin, is it me? I, I moved that the board approved four warrants for the period February first, twenty twenty-two through February eleventh, twenty twenty-two. As printed on the agenda for this meeting.
Second.
We'll call vote, all those in favor saying aye, Carolyn Vantine, aye.
Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
Kevin Calcutta, aye.
I guess that passes, now we have, I guess, one minute, minutes. Do I have a motion?
I moved that the board approved the regular minutes of January fourth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
We'll call vote, all of those in favor saying aye, Carolyn Vantine, aye.
Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
Kevin Calcutta, aye.
And do I have a motion, just generally about, I don't know, say terminating the meeting, as an example?
Cece, may I just say, before we close the meeting, just thanking to our firefighters who responded to that house fire. Thank you, Blythe, for bringing us up to date about that, and I'm so glad the family is safe and um, thank them for their efforts. In um, helping our town, so thank you very much, and um, I move that we adjourn.
Second.
We'll call vote, Carolyn Vantine, aye.
Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
Kevin Calcutta, aye.
Thank you, everybody, good night.
Just a reminder, we're meeting at six o'clock on March first.
March first, in person.
In person.
Thank you, that was helpful, Blythe, thank you.
Thank you.